I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Anytime we share a portion of our vision, mission, and belief statements, and this month, we believe in instruction that is student-centered, effective, creative, engaging, and that teaches more than academic content. We believe in assessments that are authentic, meaningful, appropriate, and helpful in guiding students' futures in whatever vocation they choose. We believe in technology that enhances learning, enables education in varying environments, and prepares students for current and future technological advancements. We believe in facilities. We believe facilities should provide a safe, clean, and effective learning environment. And we believe in proper stewardship of resources that supports the sustainability, security, and effectiveness of our school district. All right. And do we have any recognitions today?
Yeah. You know Swy High School?
Yeah.
I'm giving you a second to... My computer rebooted there when I got back here, so... Your offline, it says.
The same problem I've got.
Yep. I don't...
Give me a second. We've got these smartphones.
Hopefully yours is smarter than mine, because mine's not doing anything.
Mine doesn't work either, Mr. Dean.
Yeah, I have one little paper.
It'll come through. All right. Yes. All right. So, for the junior, senior, middle school, and high school, first off, graduation. We had graduation on May 27th, I believe. And we had 43 graduates, and we had 46 students walk. We had two foreign exchange students, and then we had one life skills student. They went through that. We had, like I said, 43 graduates. Most memorable teacher was Mr. Kyle Von Aulman. And we took, also, then on June 13th, took seven students to the IHSA Student Leadership Conference in Plainfield. This is an annual event that we've attended every year since I've been here. Actually, the first year, back in 2009, Monica Abenath took it. So Bloomfield's been a part of that. They've had the leadership conference since 2008, I believe, and we've been a part since 2009. I took Quentin Ross, Braxton Clark, Blake Neal, Lance Workman, Annie Peg, Adam Lefig, and Lainey Graves this year. So it was a good time. Students enjoyed themselves, and it was pretty. It's a very neat thing to be able to be a part of. I had four staff members attend an SAT workshop through College Board with me on June 14th. That was held in Evansville. Julie Evans, Deanna Potts, Sierra Kirkley, and Christina Crane. Crane, Vagan, sorry. Christina Vagan. Luckily, she's in Ireland. She can't hear me. So, but that was informative, something that we want moving forward, because the SAT is the exam that the state looks at for juniors. And so that was informative for them. I had two staff members attend ID Tech Go Crit training the next day on the 15th. Again, Julie Evans and Bree Karazia took part of that. Had two staff members attend Fab Lab training in Chattanooga, Tennessee. Julie Evans also attended a day down there. And Tasha Clark attended the two-day session. And that's a course with our digital fabrication, professional development on that. Had a successful summer school that ended last Thursday, the 22nd. We had 19 middle school students. Ms. Karazia took care of language arts, and Ms. Evans took care of math for those. And we split them up in seven, eight, and six. So that was successful. And appreciate their help with that, and the students. You know, they think, "Ah, summer school." But to get here, and they have a pretty good time on us. We had 25 high school students in credit recovery, and they earned 52 credits this summer. And we have had a lot of success stories this year with graduates and students earning credits. I, you know, without getting into too many details and names, because I don't want to forget them, but I mean, we had kids that were... And just a sure, genuine appreciation and celebration that they would... They felt, the pride that they felt in earning those credits. It was really good. So all the way up to the last day, you know, we start with a large number. On the last day, we had five students in here that were knocking things out. So Mrs. Bladen, Kristi Bladen, took care of the credit recovery this summer with that. We had SWAC All-Conference. So for SWAC All-Conference, girls track, honorable mention was Jayden Metis and Malia Fischel. Boys track all-conference was Nolan Hughes. Honorable mention was Justin Beard. Boys golf all-conference was Holden and Weisman. Girls tennis all-conference was Adeline Weisman. She was the singles champion. And Lucy Allen was all-conference. Softball all-conference, we had Addison LaFrie. And honorable mention, we had Eleonora Beretta and Lila Kuntz. Baseball, we had... Made all-conference, we had Brett Schardt, Braxton Clark, Dylan Warren, and Boone Holtzball. We did have Calvin Myers, advanced out of the boys sectional in golf and went to the regional. We had a Southern Indiana All-Star in baseball, Brett Schardt. He's the second, second Bloomfield athlete, baseball player, to make the Southern All-Star team. So congratulations to Brett. They played this past weekend. We haven't lost yet where we're at. We had two underclassmen play in future games. Boone Holtzball pitched in, or played and pitched in the baseball futures game that they hold on that All-Star weekend. And Blake Neal played in the basketball futures All-Star game at Bainbridge Fieldhouse on the day of the Indiana Kentucky All-Star. That's what I've got.
Okay. And Mr. Burden is not here, so we will hear his recognitions next month. Or do you have someone?
I'm sorry. I don't see him here, and I've tried to communicate, and, you know, schedules are busy. I do want to recognize from May, our Senior Student of the Month. The timing at the end was crazy, and trying to communicate then. But it's Justin Inger. And I just want to say how proud I am of Justin. Number one, for the effort that he had this year and in accomplishing what he needed for his graduation and already having a plan moving forward. He's going to be, I can't remember what union he was going to be a part of, but he's already gone through there and started and beginning their apprenticeship. So I've communicated with Leslie's mom and tried to communicate with him, but I just, I didn't know if he was going to be here or not. And so I just wanted to recognize Justin. I mean, his efforts at the end to... Out of the two is really difficult, and it catches a lot of kids. And it's hard. And, you know, I had about four students, four seniors, who really buckled down at the... And, you know, and made it at the end and got out of the two, which is usually the trigger for the Core 40 diploma. And so Justin was one, and I just want to, not only for Student of the Month, which I want to make sure that he and, or get it to mom, get it to him, but I just want to recognize him for his efforts and to be Student of the Month as well.
Okay. Thank you. And I see we have one signed up for public comments. Miss Royal.
I'm not backing anybody. I'm still with Royal. And, as you all know, on the agenda, it's my, you're approving my retirement. And then I know that the position has been posted. And I just want to give a little bit of information. And I have been, one, I've started this new venture in my next career. And then I've also been out of town. So I haven't had a chance that I had planned to before I left, and I didn't get to talk to Mr. Dean and Dr. Vanderey about this. But some things to keep in mind about the Bloomfield Academy. And it's, because of the kids, it's been successful. At various times this year, and I'm thinking about next year and what someone's going to have to do. But at various times this year, I think the most we had at one point is 78. And you think, okay, why doesn't she know for sure? Because there's lots of kids coming in and out frequently. And they finish, and then they're done. But I think at one time this year, the most we had was 78. During the school year, they earned 201 credits, which is incredible for what they've done and to get them, so that they can get those diplomas. You have to keep in mind, as you look at somebody who's going to take this position on, you've got your kids that are here in the building, kids that, some of them you see often during the day that are with you to work with, some that you see for just a few minutes during homeroom, some that you don't see at all, except when they come in to take a test, because they're not scheduled in, but they've got to get a class finished. We still had virtual students. The kids that were, you know, for various reasons couldn't be here, either because of an illness or some of them were dealing with mental health issues and couldn't be at school. And so we still had students that were virtual. So you've still got that going on. We had students that were on expulsion contracts. So that's a different kind of student that you're dealing with virtually, and you have to be prepared to work with those. You have students all year long, in and out. Either they finish the program, they're move-in students to our district, and their schedules just don't work, or they finish the course, and then what are you going to do with them? And how can you keep them moving ahead? The big thing you have to remember is it's an alternative education program. It doesn't look like any of the other classrooms, and it's not supposed to. It needs to be different. There is a grant involved, a state grant. It's a non-competitive grant. We never know exactly how much money that we're going to get, because you don't know how many students are going to be involved, and you don't know how much money that the state is going to allocate. But approximately, we've each year been able to count on a little $30,000 to $35,000. So you can count on that for whomever's salary that this is going to be. In the grant, it does ask that there be a licensed teacher. Now, obviously, we're not going to do anything that's not, that isn't by the book, because you can have a licensed teacher say they're taking care of the program and maybe be in touch with the person if you have an aide in there. But the model, and I think we've shown that it's been very successful when we've had a licensed teacher in there. Again, I haven't gotten to talk to Mr. Dean or Dr. Vanderey about this, and I didn't know that the position was going to be posted. And, you know, the thing is, as with any of us, none of us knows what goes on in somebody else's job on a daily basis. You know, even, you know, in the five years we've had the program, I'm guessing Mr. Dean probably hasn't been in there a total of 10 hours in that classroom, and he wouldn't be. You know, he's, that's not, he, so it's hard. And, you know, you just, you just don't know. But here are some of the things that that person that has that needs to expect. First of all, some of the students that are in there graduating early. Some are taking advanced courses. Some are taking some college courses through ID Tech or wherever it may be, but they need a place to be, and with those courses, you don't assist so much. Some, it's strictly a schedule conflict. The majority are not that way. The majority are retaking courses, trying to gain those classes. They're dealing with all kinds of situations. They've got anxiety, and school is an issue. Being in the regular classroom is an issue. There are discipline issues. There are attendance issues. But for most of those that are in those situations, school has been a negative experience. And for some of those in their families, it has been for generations. And so they don't feel the support that we all know is here for everybody. They don't see that, and they don't feel that in the regular classrooms. So you hope that whoever's leading Bloomfield Academy can show them and help to build those relationships. And here are some of those things, because the relationship is key. Those students have to have some confidence in that person that's in there. These are just a few of the things that have happened. Most of these have been this year. You have to provide a safe place for them. And Mr. Dean, don't, I hate for you to listen to this. Some of these students, attendance and getting there on time is an issue. And so then they're late, and then they're not supposed to go to breakfast. And so maybe the person that was running Bloomfield Academy and the cafeteria, person who was in charge of the cafeteria, sort of found a way to get around that they were late and they weren't supposed to go to breakfast, so we got food for them, and they brought it to the room to eat, because they were hungry. You know, either they were up late, or they, and they didn't come to school. They're hungry. If they're hungry, they're not going to have a good experience. You know, being hangry, as we all joke about, is a real thing, as a lot of us know. But not only for some of these students, being hangry, but knowing that they're going to be hangry again, and that it happens frequently. And knowing that they're counting on breakfast and lunch here. We've got to get, we've got to, they've got to eat. The other thing is that the leftovers from the cafeteria went down to Renee first, and she picked out what she needed. And then we sent somebody from my room down. They dropped some off in the life skills room, and then they brought them into my room. And those kids counted on that, a lot of them. And that some days, they would want to take what's left over home. Definitely on Friday, they would take leftovers, milk. And other kids came in during the day, too. But some of those kids counted on that. So food. Calling and texting and messaging for those that aren't getting themselves here and saying, you know, "You've missed these days." Where are you? Get here now. And being sure that they have that encouragement, nudging, grousing, whatever it took. For a pregnant student, I had, probably for three months, I kept saltines and ginger ale in my room, and she had that almost daily. I helped them and taught them how to make doctor's appointments, because many of these kids are on their own. We practiced interviews. I helped them write resumes. I went over job applications with them. We talked about taxes and how to fill out their tax forms, how to pay their own bills, how to make an appointment with a mechanic, what you say to the mechanic when you call. You know, I helped find a couple prom dresses. We have, one of them had her baby in here a couple different days, because she didn't have a sitter, and it was much easier for her, much better, and we did fine with having a kid here, for her to be here and not miss school and have that baby here. That was only a couple days. I helped them fill out forms to get their driver's license, to work on insurance, to compare insurance rates, but to look at what you're really getting. So there's all kinds of life lessons that are involved in this. I had personal products, everything from toothbrushes and deodorant to tampons and dental floss and everything that you can imagine that they would come in and need. This person needs to have a little, be tech-savvy. They have to manage EdMentum. Andy is wonderful, and he was always willing to help me, but Five Star doesn't support EdMentum. So I would call the tech people at EdMentum and get the information, and if I couldn't figure it out, Andy would help me once I'd done that. But you have to be tech-savvy, because then you also have to make the bridge between Harmony and EdMentum, because there are some connections. For example, you have to get a spreadsheet from Harmony and make it work in EdMentum so that you can get the automatic grades out to the parents every week, because it's something that, that's what this does. You have to be able to make the bridge between the Google Classrooms and Clever. Five Star doesn't support Clever. And Classroom Relay, although somebody said we're not going to use Relay, but that's what allows you to watch the students' screens. And if they don't have that, if whoever can't do that, they're going to be lost, because you have to be able to do that. You also, in EdMentum, you have to go in and set up each class individually. You can't do a, you know, you can, you have to go into each class and set it up. You have to do each student then individually and keep their schedules going day by day. And usually, I updated student schedules and what their deadlines were once a week. But you have to be tech-savvy to be able to go in there. You have to be able to work with their graduation plan, except you don't have access to that. So you have to look at their permanent record, because at various times... And Mrs. Vagan and Mr. Dean are swamped. And, you know, if a student finishes a class and we don't know what the next class is, chances are, they're not going to get up there, and they can't. And so you have to be able to help them decide what class is going to be next. And if they're in there for four periods and they finish the first period, you don't want them sitting for three periods. And then you have to think about academics, because we have everything from health, English, math, science, social studies. Somebody, some of the things that I did, I spent a lot of time, or some time looking on Khan Academy. You know, I taught math, but it's been a long time. And so I had to refresh myself on the unit circle, trig functions, proofs. I had students take physics. I had to try to help a little bit with physics and do a little reading there. Chemistry and biology. You know, and you just have to find those resources so that you can help them. Foreign language. I had a student, and he could tell me the definition. He knew the vocabulary, he knew what the words were, but then we had to figure out, how do we use this, and where does it go? And then there's English. And you have nine through 12, plus all kinds of grammar and writing classes. You have to help them with Shakespeare and Sylvia Plath and, and some of these terms. And maybe you often, I should admit it, but I had forgotten these. Alliteration, metaphor, simile, personification, syntax, imperative, voice. Economics we had, and you know, income, capital, comparative advantage, authoritarian capitalism. I didn't know all that stuff, and I had to find it. You have students that have IEPs in there, and that would rather stay in there than go to the resource room, because it is a little, it can be more quiet. It's crazy. You know, you've got, you have to deal with students being able, and excuse my language, you know, students get, are frustrated with their lives, and then you ask them to do something, and they get frustrated. And Mr. Dean probably remembers this. One of them called me one day. She was walking out, headed down to see him, that I was a fat old bitch. And I'm sure she knew I wasn't fat, and I'm not that old, and we'll leave the rest of it up to determination. I don't know. But then, you know, the next day, she was coming back in there. And she had to know that we were going to address that, but that she was still going to be supported. And we were going to get her through the next day, and we did. You know, I will say, I'm obviously, I feel very strongly about this. And we've had a lot of good, good aid. This worries me, I will say. Putting an aide in there worries me. But, and I will say, it's a little hurtful. But I can also say, the big thing, and the reason I'm saying all this, we've got to take care of those kids. When I think of those 78 kids, and I think of, I can make a list of them, and I can't be, you know, I can't tell you, but I think of some of them, they've got to have somebody that is in there that can meet a lot of needs. And as I said, Mr. Dean and Mrs. Vagan, they're swamped. You know, and it's, it's hard. And, you know, some of those kids, if you can't help them right then, you lose them, and they need that. The other thing is, and I, we didn't think about this kind of until summer school started. I helped Mrs. Bladen and Mrs. Evans and Mrs. Karazia get started. And the training for somebody to come in, and it took us a lot to get that going. And especially now, after I've said all these things. But I would be willing to help that person, and, you know, get them started at least, if we could plan that ahead. So for those students' sake and all those students in there, give those things some thought. And there's lots of people out there that could do it, but you do have to have some background in, in a lot of those things, because they, they're needy, and they, they need us. And, you know, some of these kids, when Mr. Dean said we got some kids through and they graduated, you know, some of them, if they hadn't had these opportunities, they wouldn't have made it. And that's, that's our whole goal. That's why we're here. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. And now for the consent agenda. And we're going to go back and forth between the computer here. So we have May 25th, regular session. Yeah, used our touchscreen. May 25th, work session, the treasures report, and then also personnel. And then we have donations. We have two donations. GCMGA donated to the NJROTC. And then Pat and Alan Brown donated to the NJROTC, and we want to thank them for those donations. And then we have fundraiser requests for the boys' basketball skills development, grades one through six. Bloomfield girls' basketball summer camp, grades one through six. And then volleyball camp, grades kindergarten through eight. Do we have any comments or questions on the consent agenda?
I'm trying to look at this with my... So we had the personnel on there, right? So I just want to say, with Mr. Von Aulman, his resignation, he's going to be missed. And then Stella, she's, I mean, if I'm being honest, you're part of the reason why I got on the board to begin with. And I'm sitting here thinking, it's kind of funny now you're going to bat for this position, right? But, you know, in the position you were in before, I knew, I know firsthand, you've seen a lot. And I just want to say thank you.
Thank you. I think you won.
Also on the consent agenda, I do believe, is that we have our new hire, is that on there? Is that the next to that personnel?
You want to wait till after we vote and then introduce her?
I would like to thank Stella. I sent her a message from work. I was at Mill Street that night. And one of the things all the kids were talking about was, "Oh, my gosh, we don't have Miss Royal. Oh, my gosh." So I sent her a message just to let her know that she was on topic down there at Mill Street that night, and let her know that she was going to be missed. Thank you.
And along with Mr. Royal, we do have another retirement, and we want to thank Jane Helms, the cafeteria. I don't know how many years she's, she's been in the cafeteria.
Over 20.
But it's also on here, she has agreed to be a substitute cafeteria. But when I talked to her during track and field day, when we came in to grill hot dogs, she said, "Well, that way I can pick and choose what days I want to come in." So she was looking forward to that. We want to thank her for her time here at Bloomfield also. So we have a recommendation to approve the consent agenda. Do I have a motion?
I'll motion we approve.
And do I have a second?
I'll second.
All in favor? All right. Thank you.
Yeah.
Yes.
Couple things here, as already been mentioned here. I want to thank Mr. Von Aulman, Kyle Von Aulman, and Miss Royal, so for their years of service to the students at Bloomfield and to the school community. And they will both be missed. Both have had a, you know, profound impact on several students that came through. So I want to wish them all the best in their future endeavors. And so, and then I want to recognize Mrs. Christie Webb, right over here to your right. She's standing by herself.
I didn't shower.
I said, "Sorry, I'm going to just..."
I thought there'd be more people, so I just, I didn't want to make someone see.
Christie is going to be our new, or is our new, not going to be. She is our new middle school special education teacher. She has several years' experience in the special ed classroom and in the environment. She's come to us from Vincent's Community School Corporation. She is a resident of Bloomfield. And so originally from Jasonville, so exactly back from here.
Welcome.
Couple of years, I believe, the first few years there, right? Is that right?
Yes, yes.
And so we're very fortunate to have Christie with her, number one, with her experience, her background, her knowledge, coming into this new position, which is much needed for our special ed population. So Christie, welcome. And welcome being here today.
Do we have another new employee, new coach?
He was all fired up to come down here with me. I said, "You know, they probably won't mention your name on this..."
That's why I brought it in.
Welcome, welcome.
I'm glad somebody recognized.
Welcome, Adam. Thank you.
Yeah. Nice. Appreciate it.
Okay. Now for other business. First is the Bloomfield Middle and High School Student Handbook. And...
That is a different one.
Oh, I've got no version, sorry. Here we go. Get the newest one. It is BSD Chief of Police position. And would you like to explain where we are in that process?
Sure. Yeah. With the approval last month, that allowed us to open the position for the Chief of Police. And so we posted it. We had an awesome applicant in Marvin Holt, who's already been here, dedicating time and investing in the students, building relationships with them. So we're at the process of being able to recommend him for approval as the Chief of Police.
Do we have any questions or comments? All right. Do I have a motion to approve?
I'm moving approve.
And a second? Okay. All in favor? All right. Thank you. And then the 2023 BSD School Reopening Plan. And this is just a grant requirement?
Yeah. Every six months, we're supposed to do this, as far as a federal requirement. So our nurse, Renee, gave us some input that we took on just some language changes. But overall, the plan's still the same, and the BTA didn't have any recommendations for any changes either. So this will be our last one that we have to update, as unfortunately, the grant is running out. But yes, this is a grant requirement.
Any questions or comments? All right. Seeing none, do I have a motion?
A motion we approve.
And a second?
I'll second.
Okay. All in favor? All right. Thank you. Now to the 2023-2024 Middle and High School Student Handbook. And as we went through the copies, we saw all the highlighted changes. Is there anything that you'd like to specifically speak about?
The biggest one that was in there is both the principals ensured that they added the required legislative language on bullying, which the biggest part of that language is including contacting both sets of parents, the parent of the student who reported the bullying and the student of the, or the parent of the... and the student of the, or the parent of the student who, um, is being accused of the bullying. And they, they both added language in what the next steps will be in that process. Um, so part of what they're doing is ensuring that we're meeting the legislative mandate that has come out and will be effective for next school year.
Can I ask a question on that real quick? I, I realize that the max is five days, but what is our own administrative guidelines? Or what are we, what's our goal, I guess, when, when, in notifying parents about bullying issues? I'm assuming it's not five days, but is it usually trying to get ahold of them within the next day or within same day, next day? You're all looking at me. I can't see you, so.
I'll, I'll answer, and, and, um, our expectation would be that that the day that they're receiving it, that they're working on what the, um, working to prevent it. You don't want it to continue. So just the overall goal of contacting the parent, which I agree with the state mandate, is, you know, getting the parents involved to work towards ensuring that it's not gonna continue. But as far as contacting the parent, um, you know, I, I do think every single time the goal should be to beat that state mandate and do it within one day. So if it's happening in the morning, there's no reason to not contact those parents that day, because you don't want it to carry over to the next day or social media at night. Um, so the, the goal is to make that contact right away.
Yeah, I just reiterate that, Steve. I mean, that's, that's, you know, as soon as possible that day, uh, to make contact, you may not be able to, you know, and you may not be done with the investigation, but, uh, just notifying parents.
Yeah.
I understand, all, just they put in there the five day timeline.
They are making it way too easy on us with the five days.
Well, I mean, I realize you gotta put something in there that, you know, covers you, but, um, I, I assume that, you know, our goal was to try to do it much sooner than that, but just curious. Thank you.
All right, is there any additional questions on the Middle and High School Student Handbook? All right, seeing none, do I have a motion to approve?
A motion.
All right, and a second?
A second.
Okay, all in favor? All right, thank you. And now for the 2023, 2024 Bloomfield Elementary Student Handbook. Uh, and again, just same language, uh, in the high school handbook. Uh, any additional questions on the elementary handbook?
Yes, um, on page 14, which none of us can look at. But I had made a note, that I, I noticed that we had made some changes to the cell phone language on the middle school and high school. And then I noticed that we, in the elementary, we removed on page 14, it said cell phones. Well, cell phones were related from the handbook in that section. And I didn't know, is it, are cell phones addressed somewhere else in that handbook? Because I didn't.
So I asked, uh, Mr. Riggelman the same exact question, as to why it was being struck and out. And it's, and he says because of it being repetitive, that it's al- already in there.
Somewhere else.
Somewhere else, so.
I was just going off of what was highlighted.
The standard and rule will still be the same as what it was before, but he was, yeah, just striking that out since it was repetitive.
Got it, thank you.
Yep.
All right, any additional questions on the elementary handbook? All right, seeing none, do I have a motion to approve?
I make a motion to approve.
All right, in a second?
All second.
Okay, thank you, uh, all in favor? All right, thank you. And then the pro- proposed revision to the non-served employee handbook. Would you like to give a little background on that, or is it?
Sure, just, um, to be in compliance with Indiana labor and wage laws, um, we needed to remove comp time, um, and we need to remove or put in that authorized pay is only permissible for classified staff who do not work year round. So basically, um, our hourly employees that aren't working 260 days have to be paid their full pay within 10 days of the two-week pay period that they finish. So whatever hours they work within the two-week pay period, they have to be paid that full amount, as opposed to, you know, for example, our teachers being salaried, they can be paid over 26 pays. That is not something that legally we can do, um, for hourly employees who aren't working the 260 days. So it's, um, to be in compliance with Indiana wage and labor laws.
All right, do we have any questions or comments on, on the proposed revision?
Yes, just a quick question, how, how long has that law been in place? Do you know?
I, I don't know how long, but I think your general question is, has it been in place for a while?
Yeah.
And so, um, it's us trying to make sure that we're gonna follow it. So yes, it's been in place, and we're just trying to now move forward doing the, having it correct.
Okay.
Any additional questions? All right, seeing none, do I have a motion to approve?
A motion we approve.
Okay, and a second?
All second.
All right, all in favor? All right, thank you. And then the request for approval of the NJROTC instructors contract. And these are just, uh, requirements, uh, for those positions annually? So is there any questions or comments about those contracts? All right, seeing none, do I have a motion to approve?
We'll make a motion we approve.
All right, and a second?
All second.
All right, all in favor? All right, thank you. And now the tech and learning conference for the superintendent. So, would you like to explain a little bit about that conference?
Sure, um, uh, you know, one of the reasons why I'm requesting is this is outside of what's already in my contract. So to go to a conference, it's not my contract, I need your approval. I can tell you that the only expense the corporation would be the travel to and from, because the conference, since I won an award right before I came here for, um, the innovative superintendent award, they're paying for the rest of the conference. Um, I do hope that the, the time there, um, is beneficial, um, to us. Part of tech and learning, um, what I'm interested in with it is, we don't technically have a technology director. We contract our technology services with, um, you know, Five Star, and Andy does a great job. I think there's some areas where he goes above and beyond what his exact role is. But I think that puts a little bit more on me to make sure that I'm keeping up with the trends in technology and how it affects learning. So just in taking that on, it's something that I was interested in before, working on before, and just wanna continue to learn to make sure that we're staying up to date in those needed areas.
All right, do we have any questions or comments on this conference? All right, seeing none, do I have a motion to approve?
A motion we approve it.
All right, give a second?
All second.
Okay, all in favor? Okay, thank you very much. And then the request to increase, uh, Sarah Helms' number of working days. You wanna explain a little more about that?
Sure, so, um, the, the employee that was in her position before was on a 195-day contract. And when Sarah was hired on, um, the January 26th board meeting, um, it wasn't specified in her contract how many days, um, she was gonna be on there, which automatically puts her at 181 days, which I don't believe is enough to do the food service director position. So I just wanna go back to what was doing, what we were doing with the previous employee at 195 days. Um, and, um, so that's what I'm asking.
Okay. Do we have any questions or comments about that?
When can she, when will that start? I mean, can she, is it on a school year basis, or?
Yeah, so technically, this, this is, I'm looking at it for next school year. Um, however, with, you know, when the school year ended and that 181 days ended, there were still, um, things that she needed to accomplish. So we were still paying her hourly rate when she came in, because she's an hourly employee. So legally, when she puts down the, the hours that she works, we're gonna pay her. So, you know, we're kinda already paying the 195 days. And I just wanna have it, you know, approved and understood by the board as well, that that's part of what she's doing.
All right, any additional questions or comments? All right, seeing none, do I have a motion to approve?
I like a motion.
All right, and a second?
All second.
All right, all in favor? All right, thank you. And then lastly, under other business, is the House and World Act 1558. If you'd like to give a little background on that.
Sure, so just another, um, law that's going into effect for next school year requires schools to post their reading and writing curriculums. Um, and so we're asking you to approve the reading and writing curriculums that the principals have, um, posted. And I believe the, you know, the goal of, of, um, our representatives and senators is just more transparency to the public of, of what is being taught and used in our schools. So, um, there was nothing that I think we were trying to hide before, but we're meeting the state requirement. And so Mr. Dean and Mr. Riggelman worked with the teachers to get, um, the reading and writing curriculum so that we could put it in front of you to vote and post it.
And then if it is approved, where would it go from there? Would be on, on website, or? Yeah.
Yep.
So they'll post the curriculum on our website?
They'll, what they'll post is what we're using. So like, not every single detail fits what you're asking, but if you're asking like the.
The program?
Yeah.
Okay, gotcha.
Okay. All right, do we have any questions or comments on that?
I really enjoyed reading what Mr. Dean put together. I'm a little bit of a nerd.
He had quite the report.
Compared to what, uh, Mr. Riggelman had put together. Listen, that's not, that was a, that was a collaborative effort right there.
All right, any other questions or comments? All right, seeing none, do I have a motion to approve?
I make a motion.
All right, and a second?
All second.
All right, all in favor? All right, thank you. And then now to the superintendent's report.
Sure, so just two comments that I wanna make. One, um, um, I really enjoyed our graduations. I, I think Mr. Dean and his team really put together a good ceremony. It was great length of time, it was a great focus. I think it's really cool that the seniors vote on, um, you know, an influential educator, and that person gets to come and speak and then read the names. Um, I did, um, had never seen it before, and I thought it was very interesting that they all handed, all the students handed Mr. Dean a little present. As they were shaking his hand, I thought it was hilarious. Um, fortunately, they didn't do that to me.
What was it this time around?
A little, uh, like those little, uh, they were lizards. Like, kinda like you throw up against a window and they stick.
They stick?
Very, very nice tradition, so I hope that continues so that he continually has to deal with that on his handshakes. Um, and, uh, and then one other thing that I will be joining, um, tomorrow, there's an informational meeting on, um, there's a law firm that is meeting with a lot of schools tomorrow to consider, um, a lawsuit against social media, um, uh, different social media outlets. So I'm just gonna join tomorrow to learn more about what that is. But if you look at the negative impact that social media has had on our students in a lot of different ways, both just mental health and whatnot. So right now, I'm just saying I'm gonna attend the meeting to learn more about what's going on. And, um, it's the same law group that, um, won a settlement against Juul for the, um, the, um, negative impacts of their specific targeting of youth in their ads. And, uh, so, um, so.
Sorry. Yes, I was like, why would they sue Juul? Like, she's a singer.
Yeah, sorry, J U U L.
I got it, I got it. It takes me a minute.
But, so I just wanted to give an update that that's something that I'm looking into to see if that's something that we'll eventually want to be a part of or not. Um, a, a big part of it is, if we do go down, down that route, it's more making the statement of, you know, we've seen the negative impact. So I'll, I'll keep you up to date on, um, more information of that, so.